Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting on this fine evening of January 25th, 2021. I'm Donald Campbell, the Chair of this Board, and I'd like the Board members to please introduce themselves, starting with you, Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. This is Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
Hello, I'm Jean Connor.
Good evening, I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, this is Jim Carroll.
Hi, everyone. Happy Mondays. Sarah Perrin.
Thank you. And also with us tonight, as usual, is our Town Manager Stuart Hurd, Assistant Town Manager Daniel Monks. We have Nancy Lively take minutes, Josh Boucher from Cat TV has got us here. We also have Lori Vatican and Christie Cross that we will introduce in just a minute. Before we start this meeting, we're going to amend the agenda in just a minute, but I need to read this one piece, please, that due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott in pursuant to Addendum 6 Executive Order 1-2092, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting. However, the public may view it on Cat TV and call in at 646-558-8656 using the meeting ID 86081229196. So, meeting ID 86081229196.
That's not what's on the screen, Donald.
Is it not?
No.
No.
Okay, say it one more time, Donald. Slow down here. 86081226196 is the meeting ID. This, this meeting is made slightly complicated by the fact that I started the Zoom meeting with the wrong link, so this may may or may not timeout. I don't think it will timeout. I believe the account has been extended. If it does, we will have to pick up with the second Zoom link in 45 minutes. So, the first order of business, stop sharing this. The first order of business for tonight is the consent agenda. This is the minutes of January 11th and an addendum, as well as the minutes of January 9th, which we only received this morning at 7:11 a.m. So, if some Board members have not seen them, you have not seen them, Jeannie.
No, I'm just saying, we need to adjust the agenda.
Oh, thank you very much. First order of business, adjust the agenda. I'd like to add a agenda item number, between items number two and three, to have Lori Vatican from UCS and Christie Cross from the Southernmont Healthcare Center give us a brief presentation. Any, any, anyone have any objections to that? Okay, all in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have now amended the agenda so that we'll have an item three for a brief health update. Thank you very much for being with us this evening. We'll, we'll do a little bit more introductions when we get there. So, again, back to the consent agenda, minutes of January 11th and the addendum, and minutes of January 9th, which were received this morning. Did any Board members not have a chance to see the minutes that were circulated this morning? Okay, my proposal would be that we push those minutes off and put them into our next meeting, and that we, we have the consent agenda focused on the minutes of January 11th and the addendum. Is that all right with everybody?
I'm happy to just abstain if that's easier.
We can, Jean, you should have time to look at the minutes. You always catch good things. We can do them at the next meeting. Warrants circulated. If you haven't had your, a chance to get in touch with Stuart about your question, now would be a time for that and a liquor license renewal of some liquor licenses as well. So, any may have a motion for the purposes of discussion. Thank you.
Your objection, as you have described.
Thank you. Do, I have a second, please. Thank you, Jean. Okay, any discussion? Okay, I would say all in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? No? Okay. So, we're now going to go into public comment. This is a period of time that we, where we welcome individuals' comments about items that are not on the agenda, and I'm going to start right at the top. We have four people in the waiting room at this point.
Go into public comment.
So, as we go into public comment, I will ask, enter you into the meeting, and I'll ask caller ending in 5866 to please tell us your name and tell us what's on your, what's on your mind tonight.
This is Angela Emerson. I am Director at St. Peter's Episcopal Church, and on the phone with me is Spencer Jarrett.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. I'm on the Board of Directors of Congregation Beth El here in Bennington.
And Spencer and I, in response to the very untimely and violent death of Emily Hayman last week, we're inviting the community to join us in a walk next week that we're calling Take Back the Walla Musick. The purpose of this walk is to really unite people. There's a lot of fear and anxiety in the community right now. So, we want people to join us and spend an hour just walking around the block quietly, some praying, some blessings, some meditation, but just to really try and unite in our sense of togetherness and dispel the fear. We'll do that from 5:30 to 6:30, starting in front of St. Peter's Church. Anyone that wants to wear a face mask and social distance, it's welcome to come and participate. And again, the idea is just to join together and to make a commitment to work together to find some new solutions to problems that have been plaguing us for a long time. So, that will be next Monday, a week from tonight, from 5:30 to 6:30.
At St. Peter's Church?
Yes.
Thank, thank you very much. This is something that's really been on all of our minds this week, and I really appreciate your response to this, and Jeannie and I have had some conversation about this. There's, there's going to be a lot more conversation about this, so.
Good.
Thank you very much for, for doing this for Emily, and of course, our concern goes out to her family and deepest sympathies as well.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you for calling.
Thank you very much.
Before you, before you hang up, I believe Board Member Connor has a question for you.
Yes, I'm just looking at my calendar, and unfortunately, this conflicts with a hearing we have, and I feel terrible because I would absolutely positively be there, and I'm sure all of us would if we could. So, my apologies for not being there ahead of time.
I will be happy to convey that to the family.
From the entire Board, please. Yes, that's great.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. I'm going to let you, let you out of the call here, and we'll move on to the next caller. Thank you for calling in tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Okay, I'm going to admit the next caller, caller ending in 5866. I've entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting, and please tell us your name and, oops, that, that caller went away. Let me enter the next one.
That was Angela Emerson.
That was Angela still? Okay. So, caller ending in 4840, you've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Please tell us your name and tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me or do I have to put a part of, push star six? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, that's good, because as you know, we, we don't know what is said because when we're reading, waiting in the prop. I'm Sam Mercino, good evening. I have a few concerns. One, leading up to the beginning part of January, actually the 8th and through the 9th and going on into the 11th. Under those circumstances, what happened on 279 with that individual? I think even though select board members do not agree about working with Facebook, it so proves that when Bennington Police put out a public statement that in a matter of hours before noon on the 11th, that individual was found. I think we, we have to get over our fears of Facebook, and when you need to go out to the general public, you've got to take trust with the general public. They did on the 18th, which was another incident that happened in our wonderful town of Bennington. And it's ironic how on the 9th, Chief Doucette mentioned about forming a crisis team, and this incident happened on the 18th. So, I'm all for Chief Doucette's proposal, and I hope it gets into place. And I just hope with United Counseling and like the adjective says, it takes a town, it takes a village, it takes people to engage, to move things forward.
It does.
Hello?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Sam, for those.
My second thing is the community park, the only community park, which you dubbed Willow Park, which is being revamped. Any particular reason why it's going to be costing $25,000 for a dog park?
That's, that's a little bit of confusion. Sam, the, the dog park is being privately funded, and that's a community effort. The $25,000, $250,000 is the estimated cost of replacing the play structures that are there. And that's, that's a very preliminary number at this point.
Right, but it's also part of the park, of a Willow Park, and it's, it's not funded because the town is paying for the insurance, and they're also putting out to bid to install whatever has to be installed for the park, what is fencing and benches and stuff. We don't even know what this dog park looks like.
Well, we do. The dog park, the dog park is a, Sam, I, I invite you to be in touch with somebody from the town staff. If you like, the dog park is well-designed. It's not costing the taxpayers anything. It's, it's going to be a nice amenity for the town.
Right, I understand that. But can we put this on agenda item, so it can be discussed?
The, what, put what on the agenda item?
Because of the insurance with the town, and it's going out to bid, and to put this out. I mean, can, there's enough volunteers, why does that have to go out to bid? We can't sit there and put up a fence with, with guidance and install this? We've, we've installed the playground. We can't sit there and install fence equipment? I'm just trying to cut costs down for this town.
Again, this is something that's being privately fundraised for, and so that will, that will not be an expense to the town on the dog park. So, I really strongly encourage you to be in touch with Stu about this and just kind of sort out the facts. And, and if you do have further questions, we can bring it up as this, as an agenda item at a future meeting.
No, I'm just looking for a little more transparency when public knowledge shall be out there through Facebook. I think in numbers and in communication, you've got to gain the trust. And, and same way with Bennington Police, they've got to gain the trust of instances that happened in December that led up to the incident that happened, so set on the 18th. This possibly could have been prevented. That's my concern tonight. I thank you for listening to it.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening. So, I'm going to enter caller ending in 196. So, caller ending in 196, you've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting, and we welcome you. Please give us your name and tell us what's on your mind tonight.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's Mike Bethel.
Good evening, Mike.
How you doing? It's sad news that I'm talking to you. You know what it's about. I guess you got something from Bruce. I sent to Bruce. Did Bruce send you something?
No.
Bruce, would you read that, that I asked you to send them to him? You said you read it for me?
Hey, I can, I can read it. I, I had sent you back a message about that.
Yeah, generally, we don't have, generally don't have select board members reading email or mail from other people. This is Citizens Comment. Go ahead, Mike, and make your comments if you'd like to.
All right, I sent Bruce something to send to all of yous because my Wi-Fi hasn't been working right, my internet, but anyway. What happened with Emily was very sad. There's a whole list. There's about 20 people I sent something saying we would like something done. I'm calling on behalf of those people, but especially Dorothy O'Shea and Stephanie O'Shea. She asked me, they asked me to speak for them, and Regina Perone, and a lot of the, well, all the people that are on that list. Well, we'd like to be able to get up some sort, set up some sort of a task force to find out how we can fight drugs and violence in our community. Whatever's been in place doesn't seem to really be working, and I think we need to get the people involved in our community. I haven't reached out to the family yet. I knew Emily and I knew her sister. Gray kids bothers me terribly. So, I'd like to see if you people will help set up a task force of individuals to find out what we can do to stop this type of violence in our town.
Yeah, yeah, there have been conversations like this. I mentioned that Jeannie and I had started some conversations, and there will be, there will be more conversations about this that, that relate directly to policing. Yes, Mike, thank you for that.
Did any of you guys attend the vigil? I, I couldn't make it because of the cold and stuff, but did you guys attend the vigil last, I think it was Saturday night?
I did not know about it in time.
Did anybody on the select board? I, I heard nobody from the town administration or the select board went to it. Nobody, anybody go or?
I didn't know about it.
I didn't know about it.
I didn't know about it until late either, Michael.
I learned about it in the paper, but may I say that, Mike, while you were on hold on the, on the phone, that the Rector at St. Peter's and also
I heard that, I heard that.
Okay, so, so then you know there are things upcoming, as well as some other things that are in the works, so.
Right.
Yeah, so hopefully, and we won't be able to attend that either because we have a hearing.
Would somebody from the town be able to attend to it? Somebody one of the administration?
We have a hearing next Monday night.
Okay, well, anyway, will you help set up a task force? And Bruce, could you please, please get the letter to them if you haven't gotten it to them?
It won't forward.
All right, well, we'll work on that, Mike. We'll work on getting the letter. We, we appreciate the sentiment. We, we realize that there are a lot of concerns on this, and we do feel terrible.
Well, let me put it this way. Will you help me set up a task force of different people where you condone it? And you can't meet in public anymore, so I don't know how anybody even gets to you people. That's what I'm saying to you.
Well, we help you, no, we will not necessarily help you set up a task force, but we, we, we are going to work on this. There will be a community reaction to this, and you are welcome to be part of it.
I would like to be part of it. I'd like you to be more informed to the people, more transparent, like Sam said, especially on this incident. I mean, we're spending tons of money to rebuild our downtown, and a poor girl gets murdered virtually a street over from our downtown. There has to be a response. I didn't see anything, and maybe I missed it, from you folks that lead the town in the newspaper about this. No letter to the editor, no quote in the paper, nothing. And something needs to be done. This has to stop. Our children and grand, we might not be able to save this generation, but the children of this town and the grandchildren of this town, the next generation, we can do something to put a stop to this or make it look like we're, to put an effort to stop it. That's all I'm saying to you, and I will follow through on this with you people or without you people. But I'll bug you every meeting to see what you're doing on this one.
Okay. And I wish somebody could attend the hearing from the town. Not everybody is, attend that meeting that that woman is talking about at St. Peter's.
Not everybody is going to attend that hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to, we're going to wrap up, but thank you very much for calling.
Thank you very much for calling.
Okay, I am sorry about this guest. I have a couple more callers, three to be exact. I'm going to enter caller ending in 2900, and welcome you to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Please give us your name and tell us what's on your mind tonight.
Hi, my name is Jordan Krazek, and I'm calling about the death of a very close friend of mine, Hans Heck, a couple of weekends ago. I just wanted the public to know how things happened, how they unfolded, as I know, know they to be. So, Hans
I just want, I do want to say this is Citizens Comment period, and we're wel, we welcome your comments, but we do try to ask people to stay under three minutes, please, so if you could
Okay, that's fine.
Concise, thank you. Yep.
Okay, so Hans lives with us, and he didn't come home Friday, he didn't come home Saturday, which not coming home too nice is a little unusual. And it wasn't until Sunday that I found out through social media that a gray Nissan truck with Florida plates had been in a bad accident. So, I put two and two together, and I contacted the police. When they finally called me back, they informed me that he had been in an accident, and they told me to tell him to come in and, you know, turn himself in when he was, when he shows up. I repeated to tell them that he was not going to show up, that he was missing, and they needed to find him. They told me that they've already spent a lot of time, resources and money on, on the investigation, and that he would show up. I persisted to tell them that he was not going to show up, he was, he was missing, and they needed to find him. So, they went out and they looked for a couple hours and then stopped looking. Everybody knows they found him on Monday, three days later. They never called his sister, which the truck is registered to. They never came to the house he lived in. They never even looked for him. They had his cell phone, they had his wallet, and they knew he had no way of contacting anybody, and they left him out in the freezing temperature to, well, happy, passed away. So, that's a whole nother thing in itself. Going on after that, his family came up for the services, and every day, we went down to the police station to get the public records about, you know, the accident report, the, the police report, to get his wallet, his phone. They were very disrespectful every time. They did not even talk to his sister until about the fourth or fifth day in a row of her going. And then when, when she finally did talk to her, they didn't want to turn over any of the public records, which they still have in. They didn't want to turn over any of the, the phones, the wallet, anything that they had on him, until finally, I think it was the sixth day. And then up until today, they still have not released the public records, the, the accident report, the, the, anything about the investigation or anything. And I don't know what they're trying to hide. I don't know why, you know, why they didn't go looking for him. They didn't even come to the house that he lives at until we pretty much called them and, you know, begged them to come look for him. And it wasn't until Monday that they actually came and got a pillow so the dog could get the scent and go after him. He was never looked for. They saw his ID. I believe he was racially profiled, and they just left him to die. I mean, they had his cell phone. How could he have contacted anybody? And then after all of that happened, after all of that happened, the way that they treated the family was completely disrespectful. They did not help them at all. They, you know, they were hoping that things would just go away. They didn't even want to talk to her, to her being his sister Karen. The whole thing, in my opinion, is downright out of control, disrespectful, and should have never happened. And I believe the transparency should happen. I believe that something should be done. And I believe that the public records should have been released the day they were asked, and they still have not. So, I just want to go on the record and, you know, let it be known that they were just trying to bust him. They never had his well-being at heart. They never cared about his safety. They left him in the woods in freezing temperatures for three days until they got enough pressure on social media to look for him. And unfortunately, they found him passed away 200 yards from the accident. If anybody saw the truck, they could see that that truck was in a condition that nobody should have not been looked for after seeing how bad that truck was, was the condition that it was in. And then going forward, after everything that's happened, they still refuse to cooperate. They still refuse to answer any of the questions the family wants to know, and they, and like, they, they just don't, they don't want to help out at all, and it seems to me like they're, they're trying to hide something. They're trying to cover their tracks. I really don't know, but I don't believe this is acceptable, and I think that they think it's just going to go away. And I want the record to be known that it's not going to go away. He has a lot of family who loved him, a lot of friends who loved him. He was an amazing person, and people shouldn't be treated this way. And protect you serve is the job title. None of that was done. And it's unfortunate that we lost an amazing person because of it. So, again, we're asking for public records, any information they can have, and basically to be dealt with as they were dealt with one of their kids that's happening too. That's all I have to say, and I just, I just hope more people reach out, and I hope that the police can actually start doing their job and, you know, helping the family a little bit at closure and finding out what really actually happened. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder to the general public, there is a process for filing a complaint with the police. If, if you
There, there has been a complaint filed.
Do that. So, okay. And I know that there's a whole nother side of this, Stuart, but I'm going to ask you to not, that we're not going to go into this right now. This is public comment, and so I, I just say thank you, and, you know, this whole Board does feel terrible about that death. It's very sad, extremely sad for the family, and I, I just want to leave it at that and don't want to get into a back and forth about what, about that, but I, but I do really appreciate your call, and we'll take it seriously. Thank you. We have a few more people in the waiting room. I'm sorry for those that are waiting, but I'm going to continue to work my way down the line here. Caller ending in 840, you've been entered into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Or please identify yourself, give us your name, and tell us what's on your mind tonight. We are a little bit behind, and so I would ask you to please keep your comments brief, if at all possible.
Yes, I will be brief. Chairman Campbell, this is Sam Mercino again, in regards to veteran Heck. I know for a fact that a certain individual, a select board member, was helping someone produce those documents and police reports on Mr. Heck. I thank him for doing that. I know it was you, Jim, if it is so, so true, which I read. I thank you for stepping up and trying to produce those documents. Those documents were produced. And I know through Mr. Hurd, they were released on, on that situation. It's just a sad state of affairs, why it transpired so long, and finally it got out to social media on the Monday, and within a matter of hours, Mr. Heck was, was found. So, it, it throws a curve when you see an individual's vehicle in an accident that was from Florida. They, they fled the machine of the scene. I wasn't there at the scene, but I know Bennington Police, the Vermont State Police, all have policies to act upon, and it takes time to act upon those policies, but that doesn't help with that. There's, there's got to be a better way. Thank you for your mic.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Caller caller ending in 025, we have entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Welcome. Please give us your name and tell us what's on your mind. We are running quite, quite a bit behind schedule tonight, so I'd ask you to be as brief as possible, please, but welcome to the meeting. Caller ending in 025. Caller ending in 025, please, it looks like you're muted. Please press star six, which will unmute you. And I apologize for that little difficulty. I'm going to ask to unmute you here. Caller ending in 025, if, if you would unmute yourself, please. By pressing star six. Okay, I'm going to put caller ending in 025 back in the waiting room. Give you one more chance after we enter this next caller, ending in 119. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. We've entered you into the meeting. Please give us your name and tell us what's on your mind. We are running a little bit behind, so I'd ask you to be as concise as possible, please. Caller ending in 119.
Hello.
Good evening. Caller ending in 119, you're in the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Are you
Thanks, Don. Sure, my name is Charlie Murphy, and I'm calling, actually regarding something that is on the agenda. I just didn't know when the best time to call in was, so I called in now. It has to do with the article that is being proposed to be put on the ballot to allow the voters to opt-in on the cannabis opt-in for recreational sales in the town. Is it all right if I make a statement now rather than waiting till later?
I think, Charlie, that would be, if, if you can be brief, that would make your life easier because we're not sure when we're going to get to that item. So, if you could give us your sort of executive summary and your comments, please. So if you could give us your sort of um, executive summary and your comments, please, that'd be great.
It's not going to be long at all, honest to God. All I want to say is that I'm, I thank everybody, I thank Jim and, and the board for uh, having the opportunity to put this on the ballot. I think it's a good idea to have the voters in the, in the, in the, in Bennington to be able to opt in and decide whether they want to have a cannabis, recreational cannabis uh, dispensary in the town, or two or three or four. Um, I just want to add that I saw in the hand, um, the, uh, the packet that was, uh, the select board packet, that there is some proposed language for the article written thus far. There was a, a proposed uh, language for the article that um, the Vermont Growers Association and Vermont uh, racial, uh, racial justice alliance proposed that the city council in Burlington passed last Tuesday, that would give, um, you know, people who are black, indigenous and people of color and folks that are uh, opening up a business, uh, a, a, a level playing field. Right now, the uh, the existing medical marijuana dispensaries have a five month um, a- ability to, uh, you know, to start up their businesses sooner. Senator Sears, Sears, as you may know, didn't feel that this was something that uh, would be warranted, but to get the bill passed out of committee and onto the governor, uh, they, uh, the bill, you know, included it. So all I'm saying is that there is some uh, proposed uh, uh, way to word the article that I'd like you folks to consider. I, you know, sent it to everybody on the board and just to, and that's it.
Great, thank you very much, we, we, we will get to that later on in this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your email on the subject as well, we appreciate that.
You bet now, bye.
I'm going to, uh, board, I'm going to give caller ending in zero two five, one more chance to come into the meeting. Caller ending in zero two five, um, if you would like to join the Bennington Select Board meeting, we have you in the meeting now, press star six, that will unmute you and you can uh, join the meeting. So again, press star six to unmute. And there you go, so please give us your name. Yeah, good evening, give us your name and tell us what's on your mind. If you would be as brief as possible, please, we're running a bit behind, but we're anxious to hear your thoughts.
Okay, thanks, Don. This is Nancy White. Can you please tell those of us who pay water bills to the town of Ben- can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you tell those of us who pay water bills to the town of Bennington why we never knew that Southern Vermont College owed us over half a million dollars for the water line that the town put on their property back in 2015? Why did we have to read this in the Bennington banner last month? And now that we know about that debt, why did you allow the water to be turned on at the property last summer?
Well, that, that was a, is that the extent of your questions tonight, Nancy?
Well, I, I'm waiting to hear your response.
Well, we're not really doing it as Q and A, as you know. But do you have other questions about it? If so, I might let Stuart go ahead and answer those and we might go on with the rest of our meeting. Stuart, go ahead and answer that question if you would, please.
Yeah, the total bonded indebtedness that, that the college owes is, is half a million dollars of a three million dollar project. Uh, they are paying that on an annual basis over time, just as we are paying the bond cost over time. So they're paying their fair share on an annual basis. And uh, that is the, that is the agreement that was reached in a public meeting with the college and with the town. And it was part of the bond issue and part of the, part of the knowledge of the community at the time of the vote.
Well, it was a, it's called string of public meetings, Stuart. It was not just one meeting, it was a whole string of meetings that we ended up uh-
We had, yes, we had actually two votes on that bond, if you recall.
And, and that also was something that was forced on us by the state because of the water pressure issues in that end of town, right? So we really had to, we had to address that.
That was part of the solution, but Southern Vermont College also sought to have water, municipal water brought to their campus. And because we were uh, getting an easement for a place to place the tank at, at the correct elevation, we agreed to run the water up to them, they agreed to pay their share. And uh, we're, we're doing so until they went bankrupt.
So it's all, all, Nancy, it's all really in the public record, it's all something that's been, we've been over and over and over again. Um, I'm, I'm sorry that if it came as a surprise.
Don, I'm talking about after the college closed. People asked and they were told that the bond was paid off by the college.
No, Nancy, that's not true. That, what you asked at the time was whether or not they were current with their payments and they were on or about that time. Later in the bankruptcy, they didn't have the funds to pay, but they are now, I understand, current now that the hospital's taking possession of the property. So they are now, once again, current uh, with all of their payments, at least that's my understanding.
So they've paid the town the $564,000?
Nancy, it's a bond payment, they're paying, I don't know what it is, $25,000 a year over the life of the bond, over 20 years for that, for that municipal water. Just as we are paying $3 million that we borrowed over the 20-year period, the life of the bond.
Nancy, this is very complicated, I, I don't blame, I, I, I mean, it's, it's difficult to follow, it's been going on for a long number of years. I really do encourage you to, to call Stuart up, talk it through. Um, you know, it's not, there's no, there's no uh, hidden agenda here. It's all been part of trying to keep the uh, water pressure the way it should be on that end of town. So I do need to wrap up unless you-
Okay.
Have any last questions?
Thank you, I, it was my understanding that they had an outstanding debt of $564,000. If Southern Vermont College is now gone, what happens to that outstanding money?
It is paid by the new owners.
So the, the hospital is, is picking that bill up, not the hospital, but the, the Southwest Vermont Healthcare Center.
Okay.
That's it, I think we need to move on at this point, if, if possible, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening. There are, there are several other people in the waiting, but I think they may be part of Jason's presentation.
Yeah, Jason has three, three, he and two others will be presenting on the lead line.
Okay, then I'm going to enter one more caller and then I'm, I really apologize to our guests here, but this is the last caller that we're going to enter as a part of citizens' comment. But I have entered caller ending in four, uh, three, four, one into the call. And um, we are wrapping up citizens' comment here, but if you would like to give us some, some fairly brief thoughts, please, please uh, press star six to unmute yourself and um, give us your name and tell us what's on your mind, please. Caller ending in three, four, one.
Yes, this is Edward Chanese Senior. Um, good evening to everyone. I uh, I want to put this on record that uh, I'm finding out on Facebook and social media about getting record requests, what people have to do. That something needs to seriously be done when public records are public records. They should be given at any mo- at any time, they're available immediately and people have to go to court to get public records of what's going on in this town with the funds. That shouldn't be, something's got to be done about this, seriously. It's, it's a disgrace, I really, uh, it's, it's very appalling to find out that when you try to find out where this money's going, that it's gone to that roundabout and who's getting paid what, I'm not throwing names out there, but nobody wants to give these records of where this money is being going to. We as the taxpayers of this town need to know what's going on. We're entitled to it, it's called public records. There is much, it's, it seems like trying to get public records because there is, honestly, I feel there's too much, they're shady going on and they're avoiding it.
We couldn't agree with you more about these public records being available to the public. There's absolutely a process for that. And Stuart, it might be worthwhile for you just to mention this in your manager's report towards the end of the meeting.
I would greatly appreciate it because too many people, I, I know, I'm not going to sit here and throw names out and, and reasons what they're asking for, but I'm sure yous know the record department is not producing record requests as asked for.
Yeah, I, I would remember, I would ask you to remember that at, at least half the stuff you see on Facebook is, is uh, you know, distorted or not real.
Right, I understand, I understand that, and I do speak personally with them, they're not getting them.
Yeah, okay, right. Well, your, your point's well taken, we do, we absolutely stand by uh, the public's right to see records as, when they're, should be available and when they're appropriately available. And I'm going to let Stuart address that in his manager's uh, comments towards the end of the meeting. But uh, thank you, sir, for calling in.
Thank you, you all have a nice evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
So uh, we are going to move, I'm, I'm really sorry, Lori and Christie, that you had to be here. Normally, we have maybe one call or two, and I'm really sorry that you had to be here for such a long time, but I would um, love to invite you, well, let, let me have, uh, let me let Sarah introduce you if I would please, if she would please, Sarah's been our sort of unofficial liaison to the healthcare system. Uh, it was, she uh, got in touch with us fairly late about um, the urgency of getting you on that, on the agenda and we agreed with her that it is urgent. And um, Sarah, would you like to just kick this off a little bit?
Yeah, thank you, Lori, thank you for, Christie, for, for joining us tonight. I, I thought this was pretty urgent and I'm glad that you made the time to join us. So Lori, um, I understand you're working UCS, so Director of Outpatient CRT and Substance Abuse Services. And Christie, you're joining us as Director of Bennington Blueprint and Project Director for the Bennington Opioid Response Team. Thanks, and if you have any slides to share, I think Donald will just work with you for that.
Uh, we, we only really have just a short while, but if you do have anything you, you need on the screen, I will have to make you a co-host in order to be able to get it up there. But certainly welcome-
To share, Don.
Okay, we, we're glad to have you here and, and please do tell us where we are and what we need to know at this moment.
And Lori, did you want to start us off?
Sure, uh, well, what I'd like to first say is that I can really hear that this community is hurting and grieving and I have to tell you how much I appreciate the way you've held that, the way you've allowed people to express themselves with such dignity and compassion. So I, I, I don't normally um, view this meeting, but I am really impressed with how I watched all of you um, be with people tonight, so I want to say that first and foremost. And really, I'm just here to talk about the fact that there is a new um, heroin on the streets or one that we're very concerned about, it's called Fire Heroin. What we understand about it is it's high potency. Uh, it's a, it's a new form of fentanyl that's in a pill form. Um, and I think that we have a spike in overdoses, fatalities. And I, I know that Christie uh, really has her handle on this. And Christie, will you talk a little bit about what you guys are doing on the task force?
Sure, I can do that, Lori. Uh, so just for clarity, the um, increase in overdoses uh, in Bennington are non-fatal right now. And so I just want to point out that we're going to receive that data from first responders as well as anecdotally from our community members and our participants in the MAT programs. So it's important to collectively get all of that feedback from folks, uh, especially with the distribution of Narcan, we're not always privy to all of those overdoses. Uh, so we're hearing from several folks in the community that there has been an increase in overdoses. So uh, as the Project Director for the Bennington Opioid Response Team, that's not my full-time job, that's in addition to my full-time job. I have no, I presented a few times to the select board, happy to do it again, maybe with a little bit more notice and I can involve my team and, and kind of put together a PowerPoint and happy to do that. Um, I particularly want to respond to Mike Bethel's comment about a community task force. I think that's a fantastic idea, this is, we're moving a mountain and some of the strategies that we're doing would really be amplified with a community task force. So I definitely would recommend that and I'm happy to connect on that and provide additional information. So through the Community Action Grant, which is a large grant that we received from ADAP, we were able to roll out a couple of strategies. Obviously COVID has impacted much of that work that we're trying to do. Uh, so we're trying to navigate through that. Uh, but we plan on doing community education, school education. We have a, an RN liaison who is helping folks with medication-assisted treatment and opioid use disorder kind of navigate the health system and helping providers as well with those particular patients. Uh, we are working on a Messages For Me platform, which is actually live, it's text messaging for some supportive texts for folks that can sign up, they can text a number. Uh, and then we are recruiting, uh, so I'll put a plug in here, we're recruiting for a community health navigator position. It's a point A F T E and this person would be responsible for navigating folks with substance use disorder to transportation, uh, signing back up for um, uh, health insurance, it's a big one, signing back up with Medicaid uh, and kind of helping with the social determinants of health. Uh, and then we have our, probably our largest project that we just rolled out two weeks ago is our Outreach For Overdose Project. And that involves uh, Turning Point Pure Recovery Coaches going out to a scene of a suspected overdose and being able to provide brief intervention and then referral to UCS. Uh, so we rolled that out and we did have successful process in place for, for getting to the right people, uh, but still early on to provide any data. Um, and so through the Community Action Grant, we do have outcomes, we have data that we're tracking. And once we get a little bit more under our belt, I'm happy to come back and present some of that information.
And that would be so helpful, sorry, go ahead, Lori.
Does have harm reduction bags that have fentanyl strips to test fentanyl and as well as Narcan masks information. We are also providing a United Counseling Services, an intensive outpatient program for people who are, who are deciding that they do want to um, stop using substances. We also have a, a new position ourselves, emergency substance abuse clinician that can uh, meet with someone immediately as we talked about with this new initiative through the hospital. Uh, we are responding to people. Um, law enforcement and rescue squad is calling us at the time that they respond to an overdose. And so we're talking treatment at the moment of, of then and following them as much as we can.
It's really great and it fits in nicely, I mean, the more we can amplify this work, the better. It fits in nicely with the, with the work that we're trying to do with UCS, um, you know, and other fronts as we, as we look to mental health issues and unrelated, but mental health issues as, as being a, a shortcoming in the police, you know, in the police quiver of skills. Um, and certainly the drug addiction uh, skills that you all bring to this are really appreciated. And um, I think this probably, this whole board would probably join me in thanking you for your efforts, but also really wanted to see them continue and expand to get this community ever health, ever healthier. Um, uh, Christie, I really liked the idea of you coming back with a, with a more full presentation. I, I do apologize for this sort of short notice, but, but I think Sarah's right that it, you know, we, you heard earlier that a lot of stuff goes around on Facebook and some of it's true and some of it's not and it gets the rumor mill working pretty fast and um, it is really nice to have um, get some of these things fact-checked by people like you, so thank you for being on tonight. Anything else that you'd like to, you feel like you'd like to share with us?
No, um, but I'm, I'm happy to reach out to um, or respond to any comments that folks have about the Bennington Opioid Response Team, we're certainly, we're not trying to be hidden, we're trying to be transparent in the work that we're doing and I'm happy to get folks up to speed on that.
That's great, and I think Sarah's been attending the opioid uh, task force meetings, have you, Sarah, is that right? So I'm glad to have, glad to have a tie into that.
Thank you both for attending tonight, I, I know it was very last minute for both of you and you're both super busy, but I, I just thought it was super important for the information that you have to be on the community and have our pulse on that here as well, so thank you.
Great, okay, thanks very much. Uh, Jean, I see you have your hand up, I'm afraid they're, okay, so, I'm gonna-
It's okay.
Okay, thanks, Christie. Um, okay, so we're going to move on to uh, our next item agenda, which is the public hearing uh, for the Notice of Intent for No Significant Impact on the Lead Service Line Replacement Project. I'm going to admit, I, three people from the waiting room that I think are uh, Jason Dolmetsch and crew. So I've got uh, Celia, Jason and Pat, it looks like, have they got the right people?
Yep.
Okay, great, uh, let's see, who's, uh, who, so we are, we need to open a public hearing, which we are not doing, uh, Notice of Intent, No Significant Impact, and um, Jason, would you like to take this from here?
Sure. Um, good, good evening, everybody, I'm Jason Dolmetsch with MSK Engineering. Um, we're here to facilitate the uh, public comment hearing for the Bennington Water Systems Lead Service Line Project of Finding of No Significant Impact. Um, here with me uh, tonight is Celia, Celia Reichel from the state of Vermont uh, and Pat Smart, the Project Manager from MSK Engineering. and Pat Smart, the Project Manager from MSK Engineering. And they're going to do all the heavy lifting. So Celia, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Jason, and thanks to the Select Board here in Bennington for allowing us to join your meeting today. So this will serve as a public hearing as required under the State Environmental Review Procedures. That's called the SERP for projects funded through the Vermont EPA Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund Program. And this is in accordance with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. So the purpose of the hearing is to notify the public of DEC's intention, DEC is Department of Environmental Conservation, I should say. So DEC's intention to issue a finding of no significant impact or Fonzie under the terms of our SERP and to solicit public comment. Our review and this hearing, I should specify, addresses Contract One only. And I think Pat will maybe get into a little bit more of a description of how this project is actually broken out. But what we've been looking at here is just Contract One. Comments can be made at this meeting as well as in writing to me, the town or MSK Engineering through February 22nd. And I think Jason or Pat may be able to just flash on the screen layer our actual contact information, but we can also provide that later. So this project can't be granted a categorical exclusion, which is a process that kind of is, I would say, a lighter environmental review. But it cannot be granted a categorical exclusion because it is significantly greater in scope than normal projects funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So the full environmental review process must be followed. But we've also found that the likely effects are not significant enough to require an environmental impact statement. Hence, we have the finding of no significant impact. The environmental review process includes a review of project planning and design reports, including project alternatives and also the environmental, environmental information document. Our environmental assessment then includes an evaluation of the proposed project's potential for impacts to wetlands, floodplains, rivers and streams, fish and wildlife, endangered species, important farmland, air quality, as well as historic and archaeological resources. So through our review, we found that the direct environmental effects of construction and operation of this product are adequately addressed by the environmental information document and the preliminary engineering report that were prepared by MSK. These documents provide a thorough assessment of the direct environmental impacts and conclude there are no significant environmental consequences resulting from the product. Regarding historic resources, the archaeological study that was conducted of the project areas concluded that no further study is required at this time. The indirect environmental effects of construction and operation of this product are also expected to be minimal. The proposed project will not have a negative effect on, so I should also back up and say, some of our review also looks at, you know, are there potential socio-economic impacts? But we found that this is not going to have a significant negative effect on the quality of the human environment. It's not going to require relocation of people or otherwise cause significant changes to the socioeconomic makeup of the area. And concerns about the potential to alter the structures of historic buildings are adequately addressed by inclusion in construction contracts, language stating that no modifications to historic structures will be, will occur. And that if any changes to project scope that involve changes to historic buildings, such as temporary or permanent removal of any building element, those will require additional review. So that's kind of the summary of what, what we looked at and what we've concluded. And I think Pat is going to be able to walk you through some of the, the more detailed documents that we were looking at to do that review.
Thanks, Celia. So I was planning to just run through a general description of the overall project. And the purpose of this project is focused on removing and replacing lead service lines or drinking water pipes that connect Bennington's municipal water system to individual connections, homes, businesses, similar things like that. This project, early on, we conducted a preliminary engineering evaluation of this project. And from this initially evaluation, we found that approximately 1,500 service connections are either currently connected to the town's water system by lead pipes or at one time were likely served by lead pipes throughout town. And during this initial evaluation, we considered three different alternatives to mitigate potential impacts from lead drinking water pipes. These different alternatives include taking no action and relying on the town's existing corrosion control treatment to provide mitigation for the lead pipe. Alternative two included consideration of installing filters in every connection that was served by a lead pipe. So put in a special, special filter in every single home. And option three evaluated removing and replacing the lead drinking water pipes throughout town where they were present. From this evaluation, we identified replacement of the lead service lines as the preferred alternative. So tonight, what we're here to discuss is the first phase of this overall project where we're looking to replace lead service lines, which are the portions of pipe that connect the mains that run up and down the streets to individual buildings located along the streets. And these are the pipes that connect the individual home to the main. And we're looking to replace lead service lines both in the public right-of-way and on private property at 100, approximately 140 different connections located on 10 different streets in town. And I'm going to share my screen because it includes a map of the project area that shows what we're looking at this evening. And we've divided up the, these 140 connections into three different districts labeled A, B and C as shown on this map. Just for clarity, these streets that are, the homes and the connections are located on Branch Street, County Street, Division Street, Gage Street, Maple Street, Park Street, Spring Street, Observatory Street, Washington Avenue, Week Street. And with that said, turn it back over to you, Jay.
And we're, so we're just here to open it up to questions at this point, either from the board or from the public.
So the board has had a chance to talk to you a little bit about this. You know, the board, remember, this is all coming under that fully funded work that MSK helped us identify and helped us apply for. So this is, this is not costing us anything. This is replacing lead service lines to individual residences and businesses without it costing anything to, to the town. So that, I know that it's not all about the money, but just need to say that again. So any questions from the board while we're here? I don't see any questions from the board. Let me check the waiting room again. I don't see any questions in the waiting room either, Jason. I think, I think we're happy that this is going forward.
Great.
And unless there's something else I think we need to know about this, we're, we're very happy with this.
Great. Well, just reiterate that the public comment period for this is open until the 22nd. And we, so we can take those comments until then, otherwise we'll go on our way. Celia, is there any closing remarks from the state?
Yeah, just to reiterate that we can take comments through the 22nd through really either, we can, so I've been found. Comments through the 22nd and that can come through any one of these three avenues. It can go to MSK, it can go to the town, or it can come to DEC. And with any comments that we get, if, if any of them need to be addressed, then we'll publish those in a responsiveness summary.
Well, we thank everybody for their time this evening and look forward to continuing this project.
Thank you for the great work you're doing for our community. Really appreciate this. It's nice to know that we're, our drinking water is going to be lead-free here. So that's really great for everybody. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
So I'm going to, just before we go too much further, I, I've been a little remiss in sharing this, but if you are trying to call in on a particular item, the dial-in number is 646-558-8656 and the meeting ID is 860-8122-6196. And we've long since passed the 45-minute mark, so we know that this, this meeting's going to last on this connection, so that's good. Okay, the next item on our agenda. Really great, really great to have that. We're going to close the public hearing. And we're moving on to community policing. We have one policy. Jeanie, would you like to introduce this, please?
Well, I'm going to, so we want to talk about the domestic violence investigations policy and I'll leave it to Bruce to introduce that. Jean also wants to give an update on where we are in moving forward on the next six policy committees. And then I had just have a short comment on where we are in, on proceeds, on getting the procedures added to policies.
Great. So we'll go Bruce, Jean, Jeanie.
Okay. I just first want to thank those who participated in the drafting of this policy, which has already been reviewed by the state's attorney and by our own town attorney. I want to thank Lauren Wilcox, Janice Largoe, Peter Lawrence and Eleanor Hilton, along with the three of us who are there, hopefully not in perpetuity, but for a while anyway, Dan Monk, Dan, Officer Dan Ferrara and myself. So a couple of things, this, what you're seeing, I'm going to be looking at the policy that is marked up, just because that I have some notes on those. The, this policy is essentially where the committee left it. After some discussion, the, there is, the town attorney basically clarified the issues that are found under the paragraph A regarding APO, Abuse Protection Orders and whose responsibility they are. So she just did some clarifying in that section. And in addition to a number of suggestions in the procedures, which will go to the chief, the state's attorney just made a correction, the correction that's in yellow on, under definitions of a protect, protection order and added the language issued in a domestic docket. Just to make sure that everybody is, that this is complicated stuff, the procedures for how you get protection orders. And so we wanted to make sure that we covered all the bases. So this is here for a first reading. I know that are in the past, some of you have had questions. I'm going to encourage you, I'm going to start first, however, with a question that has already been submitted and encourage all of you who are on the select board and others in the community. This goes out about Thursday before we are ready to handle it as a first reading. It'll go out in the packet and it's in that packet, both the marked and unmarked versions. And I'm going to respond to a suggestion by Jeanie and and note that if you send it to me ahead of time, that's great because it gives me a chance to think about it and maybe even research in case there's something that I might need to know. I will absolutely tell you right now that if you ask me a question now that I am not absolutely certain about, I will be like Dr. Fauci and I will say, I don't know. That's, that's my mantra these days. But Jeanie raised a question about language on the second page at the, and it's in the policy, paragraph C, line eight. And basically having it read, community service providers will work collaboratively, including on Bennington Police Department training and then will provide, and then it goes on from there. And then it eliminates the last sentence. I think Jeanie and I have spoken about this, but this, as I understand it, is trying to get at some of our discussions on the board since this draft had gone through, which is to try to make this stronger language regarding our intent to have the Bennington PD collaborate and, and work together with other community service providers. And I, I'm still thinking about the, the appropriate language for doing that. If, if I can find language which doesn't try to impose on community service providers, but rather directs the Bennington PD to do exactly what it is we are talking about, which they've already said they want to do, then I may have slightly different language coming forward in two weeks.
Bruce, you have two hands up. First, Jean Connor, and then Jeanie Jenkins. Would you, are you ready to take a couple of?
Absolutely. Let me get my pen ready.
I do think, I'd say as chair, I've been remiss in the way I've moderated these conversations, but it is worth noting that these policies have gone through a tremendous amount of work to get them here. We've asked the committee to bring them to us. You know, we're really not looking for board members to shoot from the hip, but we are, this is an opportunity for really insightful questions, which Bruce can then take back to either the committee or to other experts and come back.
Absolutely.
So let's not, let's not put him on the spot here so much as give him a list of things that we feel like need to be addressed.
Sure.
Questions that we need, questions that we feel that we need answered in order to be able to vote on this next meeting.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you. So I'm looking at paragraph A, the last sentence, so line 23. And I think actually Bruce, this possibly would be something addressed in the procedures, not the policy. But as I was reading that, I thought, you know, the situation that the police officers are in could be very stressful and emotional and officers should direct survivors to community service providers, sounds great, but they may not be in the position to be able to absorb that information. So during procedures, is it possible that the police could have a list, a paper list to leave behind such a situation rather than just rattling off the names of, of the agencies and phone numbers and so forth?
Oh, absolutely. And in fact, that's what they have now. And they have contact information sheets, but we want to make sure that that's there. And yes, in procedures, it'll be there. Remember that one of the advantages to having electronic procedures, policies and procedures is that those resources will also be available to officers if they have their vehicle with them. So, so all the procedures do have this notion, we're not going to try to, in any kind of situation, we're not going to try to rely just on our memory. So you're absolutely right. That's in the procedures. Hopefully you will be able to see those in not too long a time.
Thank you.
You're right. But, so this is not an unrealistic statement, I think. I'll look at it, but I think it's not that we should, officers should be ready to do that. And we'll give them the tools. Jeanie?
I actually think I'm all set, but I just want to suggest a slightly different wording under C8, and it's only one word. Additionally, community service providers will work collaboratively, including on Bennington Police Department needs rather than training.
Okay.
And will provide, so, which is really what I intended.
Okay.
Okay.
So just, I mean, you know, we may have a conversation in our committee about that. Or we may have a, I may shoot that back to the seven of us to think about how we work that language out.
Whatever you think's best. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from my colleagues here or from the public in case they?
There's nobody in the waiting room at this, at this point. Bruce, I think you're, I think you're set with your first reading here. And certainly people should get back in touch with Bruce if they have comments between now and, and our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Jean?
Okay, so I'm going to update everyone on where we are with the process of getting people placed on the next six policy committees. In the past couple of weeks, Jeanie and I and Lon McClintock have interviewed 12 people. Eight of the people that came forward who won Eight of the people that came forward who wanted to serve our repeat, so they did a policy in the fall. We chose not to interview them again. We thought that was a waste of our time and their time. We have two more people that have come forward in the last few days. So if we interview those two people, we'll still have two open seats. So if there's anyone out there who's interested, just shoot Jeanie or I or both of us. A short letter of intent, you know, why you would want to choose to do this and we can move forward. So minimum, we have two seats. We possibly would have a third. So don't be shy. We'd be happy to have you. Let's see. So so far, we have four people on social media. We have three people on special events, three people on body worn cameras, three people on collaborative partnerships, four people on nepotism and fraternization, and three people on code of conduct. Social media, that committee meeting is taking place actually this Wednesday. And the others will follow every two weeks until we're done. The last one, I believe, is April seventh. There's a a whole lot of information that's on the town website, which we keep tweaking the website to try to make it easier for people to find things. All the the information for the committee members to prepare for their policy meeting is there. There may be more to come, but there's a lot there, and I want to publicly thank Beth Antione for helping do this. She's my, she's amazing. She never says no. She's, she's, we've talked, we we work it out, we make sure we're on the same page. And she's just been phenomenal about getting the information up on the website. I just want to make sure that people realize that while the meetings, they're open to the public, the public can attend, but only as a as an observer, they're not allowed to participate or ask questions. They can just listen. And as Bruce said later or earlier in the meeting, the public does have opportunity to make comments ahead of time. And as he said, it would be great if you ask your questions to him ahead of time, so he can be prepared to ask your question, answer your question at a meeting. And I just want to also mention that several of us, I know I was on the call. Chief Doucette was on the call, Officer Harrington was on the call. There were several other community members, and Bruce, you may have been on the call too. The Zoom call where we heard the presentation and saw part of a documentary called Ernie and Joe Crisis Cops. There was like a hundred people on the call, so I really don't know who all was on there, but there were several of us and I and then we were sent the link to watch the documentary in its entirety, which I did, and it was quite amazing. So I really appreciate the fact that I was able to attend that and and watch that full documentary. It was um, it was really amazing to see. So I think that's kind of it. Anybody have anything I missed, missed? No?
No, I think you're good.
Okay.
So um, we've been working with Chief Doucette to determine a really a good way for both the department to write procedures for the policies that are now being adopted and also to give the public meaningful opportunities to comment on those on those procedures. And the what we're proposing is that once we finish adopting this first set of fall policies, that the police department are writing the procedures as as we adopt these policies, they will release those nine procedures to go with the nine policies that we will have finished in the fall for the fall and give the public a ten day comment period. So we are hoping, I think we're hoping to finish up the fall policy adoption in by by March at the latest. And so we should be, you know, getting the procedures out soon after that. The policies and the procedures will be going up on the Bennington Police Department website. We will follow that same, we're proposing to follow that same process for the spring policies. So once we finish adopting all of these spring policies that we're just starting that Jean is talking about, then again, all the procedures will go up. There'll be a a period of time for public comment. And and then they'll be finalized and again, put on the the Bennington Police Department website. So is that good? Okay. All right. So that's everything we have to report for today.
Great. Thank you. A lot, lot of work going on and appreciate, appreciate all you and all the committees volunteers are doing on this. Like to move on to item number, I guess it's six technically, but the TIF presentation, Dan Monks. We need to acknowledge receipt of a report. We've all read it. We recognize that there has been no activity in the TIF district and that this is a report that just has to be filed. Is there anything else we need to know about it?
That's about it. I mean, I'm happy to take questions. The important, the the important points of the report are that we haven't taken any on any indebtedness yet, so no, no bonds have been approved, so we haven't taken any of the tax increment. You will see that there's a minor, well, not minor, it's a significant decrease in the grand list within the TIF, but that's mostly attributable to the demolition of of a portion of the Putnam project because we're looking at the April twenty nineteen grand list, so it's quite, quite a ways back. And we won't see the in the increase that from the new project, the Putnam Phase One, until probably the year after this coming year fully realized. So in any event, you're correct, the only, the only action the board needs to take this evening is acceptance, acknowledging receipt of this report, and then I can send it into the the folks at VITA, and we will have accomplished our requirements for the TIF, annual TIF report for this this reporting season.
Will the minutes of this meeting suffice, Dan, or do you need a vote on that?
I think the minutes of this, this meeting will suffice. That that you guys have, were here to to receive the report and that's all we need.
What, any questions from the board? Obviously, we're looking forward to the day when when we have some activity on this because it will mean more more downtown activity, but for now, we're, it's there if we need it and no action to report. So. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dan, for bringing that to us. Next, we have the authorizing the chair to sign the annual meeting warning. This is somewhat complicated because of the fact that we are going to try to do town meeting by Zoom this year. And so Stuart, I wonder if you'd like to take a first crack at this and and then I can, as we move into items A, B, and C, I can help, help you co-facilitate that.
Thank you, Donald. Yes, this we have provided you in your packet with two different warnings. Including the two questions on the cannabis issue. The other not including those because that's one of the decisions you have to make tonight as to whether to include those. We have not changed the floor meeting language because we're waiting for a vote from this board on the question of setting the select board pay. This is an interesting question because under the charter, annually, the people at the floor meeting set the select board's pay generally via motion, whether to increase, decrease, or leave it alone. In this particular case, the because we are doing it via Zoom, no votes can be taken at the floor meeting from the public, so we have to find wording that moves the pay issue for select boards to the annual meeting ballot. And we will not be asking the public to take any appropriate action on the annual report. So we will simply review or hear the report of town officers. And that will include the clerk will be, will be there, the treasurer will be there, will attempt to answer any questions that arise from the audit that will be part of the annual town report. And then the questions of select board members compensation will be moved to the ballot and and we've given you a couple of proposals to mull over this evening as to how that will be changed. So those, those language issues for business to be transaction, transacted from the floor will be altered by your actions tonight. And we will amend the warning as you folks have agreed. And so when you authorize Donald to sign tonight, it will be signing a warrant, I mean, a warning that is amended by your actions this evening. And those actions will include setting a question on select board pay. Whether or not we add an article having to do with a penny for parks, which is a issue that will ask voters to raise the tax rate, the general fund tax rate by one penny to allow that money to be set into a reserve for work on our parks, which would include work on the community little park that was discussed earlier tonight. And then the the last issue that you need to deal with tonight is the cannabis retailing manufacturing questions that you see on warrant, I think is on the warning label B in your packet this evening. You'll note in the warning, the dollars that are part of the budget are already in Article One. But as a second part of action, you must adopt the FY twenty-two budget. And that would be, I guess, article number six, I mean, seven or eight tonight. So after we set the warning, we would ask you to make a motion to adopt the budget, the FY twenty-two budget. And then once the whole that is completed, we got to get to work to work tomorrow morning to get all of this in place, to make sure that everything is accurate and to get it then to the banner, so it can be warned by Saturday at the latest, giving us the thirty days notice necessary for the annual meeting, for meeting and vote. So I'm happy to answer questions. We've given you memorandum where we suggest some wording changes. But it it's really up to you, Donald. I suppose you should take.
Let me, let me break it down a little bit. Jean, I see your hand up, but if, can you wait just a second? Are you happy? Okay. If if I may, you know, I think the issue with the with the setting the select board pays is pretty simple. We we cannot, for years, it has been the same fourteen hundred dollars per year per select board member. And once in a while, people try to increase it and usually it doesn't pass. People don't usually try to decrease it, but it has been that way for as long as I, as long as I can remember anyway. But our legal advice on this has been that we need to offer the, in order for the voters to set it, we need to offer a choice. The vice chair and I have spoken about this a little bit. We feel that our, if I could speak for us, Jeanie, you know, we feel that it's probably not a good year to give voters a choice to increase our pay. Given COVID and given the number of people out of work and given how much people are going through. And yet, getting rid of select board pay altogether is not a great option because it's important to be able to make public service available to everybody, whether or not you need childcare, whether or not you have transportation costs, whether or not there are financial reasons why it might be difficult for you to participate. And fourteen hundred dollars a year frankly is is already not very much for the people for whom that money is is really make or break. So our our suggestion would be to pick a number and to offer the voters the opportunity to lower our lower the select board salaries. And again, I'll be off the board at that point. I am not running. In case that was not known, I am now telling you I'm not running for reelection. So it's really about what the future board will be doing. And I think that we need to balance this idea of making it equitable so that everybody can participate with also offering the voters an opportunity to reduce it somewhat. So Jeanie, did you have a proposal that you wanted to put forward for the board?
Well, I I I think I would like to propose that we ask the voters to decrease the select board pay by one hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars for the year per select board member.
Jean, I see you have a hand up and Bruce, you do as well. Why don't we start with Jean? So we're going to take this in three parts. We're going to first do set set select word paid, decide how we get that on the ballot, then we'll do plenty parks, then we'll do cannabis. So we are only talking at this point about setting the select word pay and the town meeting day ballot. So go ahead, Jean.
You can, you can, I'll wait. I'm not, my comment isn't about either of those things.
Okay. Bruce, your hand is down. Okay. So how does this feel? Does this feel like the right way to go? I mean, initially, I felt like maybe we should reduce it to zero, but of course, that's not very fair because I'm getting off. So it it feels instead like we should, again, balance this notion of fairness, childcare, transportation, impact on a, on an individual serving on the board with the with the time. So Jeanie, did you want to make a motion on this or what's your?
Well, I I I do want to say that, yeah, I I do think it's important there be some compensation because I do not want to exclude people who need some compensation in order to be able to run for the board. And it is also, I just want to clarify, we need to have a motion that if it's voted yes, it's accepted. If it's voted no, then our current pay stands. Is that, that's accurate? We have.
That's what, that's what our legal advice from from our town attorney is, is to offer people an opportunity to vote for a reduction or an increase that would default to the what has been for many years, the standard pay if that, if that ballot item does not pass. So and I think what you're suggesting is that we look for a decrease, a modest decrease.
Yeah.
Nothing, I mean, it could go back up next year. It would be presumably done at the floor meeting next year. But this would just be for this year.
Yeah, and I think it would, just so people know, we make about a hundred and seven dollars a month after taxes. So this would take it down to around a hundred dollars. Yeah, but I, yeah, so I would like to make a motion that shall the voters decrease the select board pay by one hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars per second, per year.
Okay, motion's on the floor and it's been seconded. Thank you, Bruce. Any, any discussion? Not hearing any. I guess I'll go right to a vote. I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining?
No.
Okay. So we have, we're going to have to do this vote by roll call. We we would start with Bruce. How do you vote on this, please?
Aye.
And Jean Connor, how do you vote on this, please?
Aye.
Jeanie Jenkins, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Jim Carroll, how do you vote on this?
No.
Sarah Perrin, how do you vote on this?
Opposed.
And I also support, I also support the amendment. So I'm sorry if we, did I not leave enough time for discussion?
I I'd like to hear why they're voting no. I'm just curious.
I suppose we could undo the motion, but at this point, we, we, the motion has been has been moved forward, but certainly if you, if you'd like to I'll indulge you, Jean. Go ahead and ask your question.
My question, what about why they voted no?
If they'd like to answer.
Yeah, I mean, certainly don't have to answer, but I'm just curious what your line of thinking is. I'm, I, I respect both of your opinions.
And we're not going to put anybody on the spot that doesn't want to have to address that either. You're, you're welcome to take a vote without having to justify it. So.
Well, I'll go first. And I would say inarguably, some of us, many of us, select board members spend far more hours outside of a select more meeting. Meeting with our constituents, addressing their claims that go far and above. You know, twenty or thirty hours that I think some people assume that we do, it goes far beyond that, far beyond that. And a hundred and seventy-seven dollars isn't going to kill anybody. It helps a lot of people. It helps a lot of people.
Fair point, Jim.
Yeah, I'm I'm comfortable just saying, I think to just put out there that we're willing to accept a decrease. Would hinder people from running in the future. That's my thought.
That's that is also true. And although I'm getting off the board, it's my hope that this proposal will be voted down. So.
Exactly, I was just going to say, Donald, if you don't mind my saying just why I'll. Why I voted yes, I'm going to vote yes, because, I mean, I voted yes tonight, but I'm going to vote no on March first. Just for that reason, Sarah, but we have to give people that kind of a choice. It seems.
To get through this, to get through this vote, yeah, I also would be voting no. On on this, but.
Me too.
So thank you, thank you for articulating that, Jim and Sarah.
I I'm just voting no publicly, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, so we're just getting it on the ballot so that we can get through this, that the horns of the dilemma, as Jim Carroll likes to say. Are that we have to let the voters. Set the the rate and this is the way our attorney has advised us to do it. So, but nevertheless, both of you speak truth in this, in this situation, so. Jean, is your hand still up or is that a new hand? Go ahead, please.
It's a new hand, this is, this is just something for the future, not necessarily this time around, Stu, but. It would it be possible instead of making hearing impaired people request? An interpreter if we just always had an interpreter, I I noticed at the inauguration, there was only, there was a fire chief who who the pledge. She interpreted the pledge herself and I thought there should be an interpreter at the inauguration. And I I sort of feel the same, instead of putting the burden on a hearing impaired person to request. An interpreter, it seems to me that we should always have an interpreter there. So.
There's a difficulty in finding interpreters that use the appropriate language. There are people who sign. But when you use an interpreter, they're supposed to be one that is certified. And I can tell you from experience and that may have changed, that it is not often easy to find an interpreter. Who is certified that can be with us every meeting night and some. Every night of the month, it would seem we meet, but.
No, 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 I'm talking about this meeting that we're talking about.
Yeah. Just talking about town meeting?
Yeah.
It it's still difficult. It's difficult to find them.
Okay, well, I guess I'm I'm a former special educator, so it's something near and dear to my heart and burdening them with. It it just seems like something that we should make every attempt to do.
Okay. Jean, it's a good point, you mind if I move on without without taking that inquiry any further, okay? So the next thing that we need to put in the ballot is this penny for parks notion, you know, we struggled during budget time with the fact that the. The playground structure and again to Sam Rustino's somewhat confusing. My my confusion conversation with Sam Rustino. There's a dog park that's going in, that has been designed, they've been working with town staff on that, that it's individuals that are doing a private fundraising to make that happen, that's a separate deal. The the play structure, which was a community built play structure is is out of. Is is past its usable life and it's now no longer safe and it's going to be taken down this summer. So that people don't get hurt there and we don't have the money in the budget to be able to replace it, but we would like to. Be able to have a steady stream of. A small but steady stream of money that can work on keeping up with park. Things as they come up so that we don't end up suddenly facing a half million dollar budget. We also had talked about wanting to leave some time for a community process on on what kind of park really wants to happen there. I know that means a lot to you, Jeannie. And others on this board, so there's there's time for that, but I I think the question tonight is, do we let the voters decide? On this penny for parks thing or or not? And it's not so much how how do we all feel about it? But it's, you know, we we've come up with this solution as a possible way to replace that structure and a possible way. To keep up with our parks and should we give the voters the choice on this, so Bruce, you have a hand up, go ahead, please.
Yes, I am, I'm I'm in supportive of having this on the ballot for for the voters to. Give us their. Yes or no? My question has to do with the language that is there. Is it, is there a reason why we don't mention reserve fund, the purpose is to create a reserve fund? That will support parks, so designate it, I mean, is is there a reason, I know in our language around it, we've always talked about it as a reserve.
That's true. Yeah.
Is there some reason that I just don't get? No, so Stuart, I I'm going to suggest that the language be for the purpose of creating a reserve fund. In support of town parks. So and then it just goes on from there.
How about to support town parks?
Fine. To support, yeah, that's that's better, I don't ever like that in support of stuff.
Yeah, one too many prepositions.
Yeah.
See, I had Jeannie and then Sarah.
I I also support it and I'm wondering that, I'm wondering whether we wanted to say to support parks or to support recreation. I'm just thinking if we wanted to have new playing fields, they would not technically be parks or if we, I I'm. So I'm just wondering if it makes sense to broaden that language a little bit and.
Well, the reason the reason we we actually, the original thought was to have it to be parks and recreation.
Okay.
But be because we have, in in a sense, separated the recreation center and the programs that that are handled there. From the parks. I just was concerned that we we get people thinking that this is also going to support the programs of the of the why in the community. That was my concern, I don't.
I think it's cleaner if we keep them separate, honestly, I I do think there's a lot of confusion about the why. What it, you know, some people are very confused about what they think it's costing or what it's not costing or what we're taking on there. You know, it does feel to me, Jeannie, that the parks are a very discreet thing, they have, they do have ongoing maintenance needs. And we do struggle with keeping up with those as more and more people use them.
And it certainly could be used to create field, playing fields and everything else, because those are generally within our parks. That's thinking.
Okay, all right, no, so I'm fine with parks, I just wanted to ask the question, thank you.
Sarah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I guess I was kind of along the same lines, would this be just for the community built park or would we? Would we just consider, I, yeah, I'm just kind of thinking along that and would we cap it at a hundred thousand, would we cap it at two hundred thousand? Or would we just be continuing this every year?
It's it's meant to be used for all parks, so this would be a fund that is created to maintain the splash pad park. Stark Street Playground, Willow Park. Initially, the large project that we're facing, Sarah, is the community built park, that that play area that that has, as as Donald said, outlived its useful life. This, the penny, the penny would generate. At the current grand list general fund, about a hundred and some odd thousand dollars, just a little over a hundred thousand. Because our grand list is just over a billion dollars. As the grand list grows, the penny would generate more money. Based on whatever the general fund grand list is, so it's not capped at a certain dollar amount. It's a penny, so whatever a penny generates goes into that reserve.
No, I I think tapping it after a certain year, I I didn't. Make, yeah, I didn't, I'm wondering if we would stop after five years or after we got to a certain amount after a couple of years.
Well, my my thinking is this, that that by doing this and creating a reserve that is constantly. Being maintained, potentially in 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 those years where we don't have many projects perhaps growing. It will allow us to reduce the general fund tax rate. An amount that we now budget for maintenance of the parks and replacement of park equipment. So in the long run, this should have the impact of actually reducing the amount we must budget to maintain our parks. Because we will have this reserve to draw on. On an annual basis.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, I'm in favor of this and I think we need to make sure that people understand what we're doing and that they. That they're not surprised when they go into the ballot box and they're they're wondering what this what this is, I think we really need to make sure that the community is aware of of what it's for and why.
We'll do the best we can with that one, Jeannie.
It's true, and also just to realize that it's it doesn't solve. The problems that face us all at once, so we have. If we were to replace what's at Willow Park right now, this would not come close to paying for that. So there would have to be some. We'd have to figure out some way to either replace it in phases or do some borrowing or 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 do something. If we knew we had a predictable. Penny coming in from the general public, then it might be possible to get that place structure up and going or some. Appropriate replacement or up and going sooner.
Yeah, and I think part of the education piece of that needs to be, we're not going to be building another wooden play structure. It, that's not what it's going to be, at least I don't think it should be, because we're just going to be in the exact same place where we are now. Playgrounds have come a long way in twenty years and, you know, if people are thinking they're going to be rebuilding exactly what's there. That's probably not true.
I could imagine a community process, though, that might might ask people what they do want to see there and and to try to, you know, if if everybody that comes out says, no, we really like what's there. You know, I would expect this board would want to listen to that, so I, you know, I think you're right, Jean, I think we're all thinking of things a little bit differently, but. Yeah, seems like seems like there's room for some community visioning on it.
I know someone that twenty years ago, a very smart person who knows something about this, said, we should not be building a wooden structure twenty years ago. And we did, and it it's lasted an amazingly long time and it's been a wonderful asset to this community, but he knew what he was talking about.
Yeah, well, a lot of kids have had a lot of fun there in the meantime, including mine, so. Other board questions, I do have somebody in the waiting room, I can let him in if there are no other board questions. Go ahead, Sarah.
I guess this is more of a thought than a question. I'm just wondering if this is the year for us to put on there, if we're asking as many questions. Just a thought.
Well, my concern is this, Sarah, I mean, once. Once we dismantle the existing park. I think the community is going to feel the loss. Much more dramatically than than when they can see it sitting there, even though they may not be able to use all of it. So I I think if we don't do it now, if we don't ask the community to support it now, it's just going to. That that space will not be utilized, there will not be that playground. At Willow Park and I think that's a loss that this community will really feel.
Well, and again, we're voting to let the voters decide whether they want this, as opposed to us just jamming it in the budget. So this is, this is democratic process at work, is this is this what the community wants? Okay, I'm going to let Sam in. So caller ending in eight four zero, welcome back to the Bennington Select Board. Please identify yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, real quick again, was, this is Sam Rustino on the subject of community park, Willow Park. Last meeting, you mentioned. Things to be replaced, you didn't mention the play area, for the public that's listening and for on record. You have to specify that it's the play area that is in violation that has to be replaced. When you mentioned that the items have to be replaced since nineteen seventy, are there other items that are invalid in violation of? Structure, whether it be the. They call it. The the patio area or the the. What the the structure itself at Willow Park or. The bathrooms or whatever, are we just talking the play area that that has to be rebuilt in the five year period, what are we talking?
Stuart, we're going to let you take this, but I'm going to start by saying we're not in violation. You have had your town staff indicate to us that this structure is, in their opinion, no longer safe. But the the state would not come shut it down, but but as a town, we do not want to take any chances with our children, if I got that right.
Okay, sounds safe, okay, I stand corrected, it's unsafe, I retract that.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Stuart.
Yeah, Sam, there there is nothing else at Willow Park or any of the other parks right now. That is in the dire need of replacement that this facility is. And we're all thinking about the large facility that's for the older. Older children, they're a small facility. Of this that is for toddlers that will not be dismantled at this time. It it appears to be in in fairly good shape, so. That's the main project that we're looking at, Sam, but it's not the only project over the long term that's going to have to be done. And this is us the reserve that allows us not only to repair and replace what exists, but also to do new things. That we now would have to budget for. And and place in the in the in the budget or on the ballot. So this this gives us an opportunity to long term finance the care and upgrading of our parks.
Yes, I understand that, I mean, you know, I mentioned, I was last words, the pavilion, I get you've done extensive work on the pavilion, the roof. The bathrooms, right now, we're just talking about the the play area that was. Am I, if I stand correct, was built by volunteers? The the play area?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Can we get the dog park built by volunteers? I mean, is it that hard to to?
No, at the present time. We plan to put, we've put that out to bid, we'll have it built by a contractor, so it'll be built to our specifications. That are being raised by the community. Community partners and I I can't tell you how many people have donated, but it's it's a file that's relatively.
Excuse me just a minute, Stuart, I'm going to break in, Sam, you've got some background noise coming, if you could turn down the volume on whatever's in the back. Going in the background, your radio or your computer, whatever, if you could turn that down or mute yourself in between, that'd be great, thanks.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, great, thank you very much, okay, so go ahead, Stuart.
These are, these are the letters thanking people for their donations. For the dog park, apparently a very popular idea. And we have decided to have a contractor build it. Because it will go up faster and it will be built to specifications that we have developed.
Okay, I understand that, but it's just the idea that, you know, we have a lot of volunteers that are out there, it's, I I've seen the Facebook page of of. How much such a short time money monies have been raised, I think the people and in the public tonight who donate immensely. It's something that it's needed, it's just that. You know, when I just saw the numbers out there, I and then seeing that it's going out to bid, I. Just looking for better ways that we can come together as a community to do this with guidance of professional contractors, that's all, thank you for answering my questions. Have a good evening, everybody.
Have a good evening. Um, go back to my. So. Let's see, nobody else in the waiting room, okay. Yeah, so I think, again, the question is, do we do we, you know, do we give the community the choice on this or do we not want to do that? Jeannie, go, Jean, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, this is probably unnecessary and I don't know if Sam, you're still listening, but I don't want you and or anyone else to think that the community built park. Was completely a volunteer effort, it wasn't, we contracted with a professional playground designer. They were there to help and assist all the volunteers, so it wasn't like a bunch of volunteers designed it, there was all, there was money. That was also fundraised and it was in there were professionals involved. There were volunteers there that actually did the physical work. But there were definitely, you know, this is. But there were definitely, you know, this is this is a real skill and something that needs, you know, attention of skilled, experienced people.
Yeah, that's one thing for a guy like me to bang up a DIY treehouse for your kids that ends up partially collapsing, and they fall out but survive, you know, but we're not going to have that happen with the town. So so thank you for that, Jean. Bruce, it seems like you're nodding your head. Is that you have the same sentiment? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so yeah, and there might, but there might be, to his point, there may be room for volunteer efforts. There may be room for local fundraising. There may be room for some community effort to get behind this. I think replacing it at a quarter million dollars would be a very heavy lift, you know, in terms of local fundraising, but if they had to raise a number that was much smaller than that, that might be possible. So I think a lot of things possible. This this would just help make it closer to a reality if if the voters felt like it was a reasonable expenditure. All right, other thoughts about putting this on the on the warrant? Okay, if not, I guess I am going to say as amended. So would we like, I'd like a motion, please, to put this onto the ballot as as Bruce has amended it.
I would move it as amended.
Thank you. Have a second. Thank you, Jeanie. Any discuss, any further discussion? No? Okay, I'd ask you all to please unmute yourselves. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you, Stuart, for for getting that in front of us. Now, the last one is cannabis retailers. I confess I have not followed Act 164 as closely as I might. Stuart, Dan, or Jim, do one of you want to give us that? Why don't we start with you, Stuart? This is a legal. This is this is what we have to, what you proposed is what the legislature requires if this town is to be considered. Is that right? Break it down for us if you would, please.
This this is the the legislation that was passed is an opt-in legislation for municipalities that wish to have these businesses operate in their community. Licensing will be done by a state board that will be appointed by the governor. But we, if the Bennington town of Bennington or the community of Bennington wants to be able to have retail sales of cannabis or the cultivation, product manufacturer and retail or testing of cannabis in its community within its confines, it must opt in. So this must be a vote to approve these operations. The language that you see in Article four and five on morning mark B is a language that was developed by the League of Cities and Towns to specifically address the question in the statute. And I can tell you that if these both pass, we will not see the operations of these kinds until sometime in 2022. And I don't remember the exact date. The legislation, very, very lengthy, lengthy document. You get all the way through it, and you find out at the end that sometime in 2022 they will begin to approve of these retailers or these manufacturers. So this just gives us the opportunity to have these businesses in the community. And 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 Jim, I don't want to steal your thunder on the tax implications. I'll let you talk about that if you wish. But there are some tax benefits to allowing this, allowing these sales as well.
So I have two hands up, but I do want to make room for Jim, who has spoken quite a lot about this in the past. Jim, do you have anything you want to add right now, or can I go to board questions?
Yeah, um, you know, on a personal level, I don't support smoking a pot, but we, you know, for generations, it's been there. When I was a kid, was easier to get than beer. And, you know, always growing up, there was that inherent risk to police officers, and this removes that a significant portion of it. And we then could redirect that 2% option tax into fighting drug abuse, doing some other benevolent things and cashing on it and help the town.
Jean, go ahead, please.
I just want to clarify, if this passes, it's Bennington and North Bennington, right?
That's correct.
Bruce, your thoughts?
Um, I'm just, again, I'm gonna ask a question about the language. It would seem to me that Article four on of Option B should, I think, read Cannabis Control Board, not just State Board. It should be essentially the same language as Article five. It might I I went through and, believe it or not, I read that statute again to this morning, just for fun.
Congratulations, Steve.
I know, Dad, I'm not sure, but it would means a person licensed by the state Cannabis Control Board. I believe that's correct. I would want to have
I'm going to
somebody smarter than me check it. But and I and secondly, I I'm in favor of giving the town voters an opportunity to weigh in on this. I'm I too am not a user of marijuana and haven't really been. But I also know that it's very easy to get, and I also think the town has the town, the voters have the right to make this decision because, and that's really the way the legislature asked the question. That's the way the the statute was written. And I'm, I think we should give them that opportunity. I actually like things. I I really think we need to move marijuana out of the shadow and make it legal and regulated.
Yes, but what I hear you saying is regardless of what your opinions are, you feel like this should go before the voters, which is kind of where I am on this.
That's that's absolutely correct.
This is not a simple decision, and we probably should not just be making this on our own, even if we could. And it seems like a great thing for the the strength of the community to weigh in on one way or the other. Sarah, I see you have a hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I would actually propose, I mean, ready to make a proposal right now?
I think maybe pending Stuart, are you, Stuart's writing like mad. Are you, is there some legal tweaking that has to happen before a proposal can happen?
No, I think I think just quickly reviewing the the document, the board is defined as the Cannabis Control Board, so I think Bruce is right. Both questions should read the same way.
Okay, so would you, would you? So on page three, Article four will read
that cannabis retailer means a person licensed by the state Cannabis Control Board to sell cannabis and cannabis products.
Okay. Are we all clear on that change? It's grammatical. Okay, yeah, Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, so are we, are we ready for a proposal?
If you'd like to make one, anytime.
So I I propose that we adopt that for for the voters to decide on this. Frankly, I think we probably missed the vote on us. But I I am all for us to receive from taxes on this, but hopefully we haven't missed the entire vote. So I propose that we adopt this for the voters to decide. Articles four and five.
Articles four and five. So motions on the floor to put Article four and five in the town meeting day. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bruce. Okay, thank you for that motion, Sarah. Any further discussion on this? Again, this is not so much about what our opinions are at this point as to whether or not we feel this is something we should leave to the voters. One of the few things that Mike Beth and I consistently agree on is that we should leave these things like this to the voters. So if we're all set with that, then I would say, why don't I ask you to unmute yourself, please? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you, Stuart. So that will go on the ballot as amended.
That's that's correct, and we we would need one more motion to ask rise the chair to sign the warrant on behalf of the board, the warning on behalf.
I'll move.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion? Not seeing any, please unmute yourselves. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will be signing the warrant. Next item on our agenda is to adopt the FY22 budget. We have been through this over and over and over again. How great was last Saturday morning? Not having a budget meeting. Much as we love coming in for a budget meeting, Stuart, and spending all day at the budget, we we appreciated having last Saturday off. Nevertheless,
Me too.
It's a it's a good budget. We recognize that we squeezed the town a bit. We're we're happy that it's down around 2%, depending on the grand list. I know that's still an increase, but it's, you know, in the in the realm of inflation, so it's really sort of level funded if you look at it that way. If there is a motion, I would look for a motion to adopt the budget as circulated.
I move that we adopt the FY22 budget as written. Second.
Thank you, Jean. Any discussion? Friend of mine says I should wait 10 seconds when I say any discussion. I don't know, it feels like a long time, but I'm I'm going to say this close enough to 10 seconds, and I'm going to ask you all to please unmute yourselves. And all in favor of the FY22 budget as circulated, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, any abstentions? Okay, roll call vote. Bruce, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Jean Connor, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Jean Jenkins, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Jim Carroll, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Sarah Perrin, how do you vote on this? And I vote in favor as well. So we are adopting the town budget and moving it forward to the voters. All right, the next item on our agenda is Stuart's is the town manager's report. Stuart, I put you on the spot just a little bit, and I I don't know if you're willing to be on the spot, but I did feel like there were a lot of questions about public records requests, about which I know there's a lot of structure and a lot of format and and how that process goes that leads to a lot of disappointment and a lot of disquiet. And I wondered if you'd be willing to maybe work that into your town manager's report, since you don't have too much else you're talking about tonight.
I'd be glad to start with that, Donald, because I I find it, it's disturbing that that social media really does take rumor and innuendo and runs runs rampant with it, and that becomes the facts that we're dealing with. We we answer all Freedom of Information Act requests generally within the timelines that are provided by statute. That general timeline is 72 hours to answer the question. However, there are some questions that are so detailed and require so much more information that we are allowed the time to gather that information and and put it into a a record request response and bring that back to the individual requesting the information. I I I think at the present time, there is only one that is outstanding of of the Police Department, and that has been held up because of currently an unwillingness to pay for the time and the record development that was required in in gathering the information. But in in this particular case that we heard about tonight, the Police Department, the officers involved in the in the in this search and in the incident met with the family members on a number of occasions. And I'm understanding that they have provided everything that they can provide, except the crash report, which is not completed to the individuals that are the family members, the heck family members that were were with the PD. So I I think there there is there certainly is some anger, as would be expected when somebody dies unexpectedly, especially after the situation that happened that that evening. But the police did look for the individual, expected that the individual would surface at some point, and unfortunately, that did not occur. A search was begun, and the individual was found having passed away. Very sad situation, I think, very difficult on the family, obviously, on his friends, but certainly also on the officers involved. And that I I won't go into a lot of detail otherwise, but I I think we've been working with the family fairly effectively over the last couple of weeks to to make sure that they understand what happened and and to the best that we can provide how how that information can be provided. It it's it's a difficult situation when when there is an untimely death, and we've now had, unfortunately, two within the very recent past. And we are, we are working very closely with those folks who are involved to try to satisfy their need for information having to do with those passings. So we, people should know that we do our best to provide the information in a timely fashion. Believe me, some of these requests are quite detailed, quite lengthy. They require staff time. They require sometimes digging back through chains, correspondence chains, to be able to find the record and produce it for the individuals. And I'd like to think that we do a pretty good job. I know of no lawsuit pending at the present time, having to do with a FOIA request. So I I think we do the very best we can, and it is, it is difficult sometimes because the information that we have doesn't always flow back to us. Certainly dealing with cause of death and things like that, that beyond our control. We don't make those determinations. We have to wait for the professionals in within the state to make those those information available to us, and then we can pass it on to the to the family or to the the folks who are asking. So these things sometimes take more time than people would like, and but I think we do, we work hard to to satisfy individual questions that come to us. And that's not only at the PD, but it's in the town offices, it's in the town clerk's office, it's within all departments. We do our, we we do our damnedest. The law does not require that we create a record that doesn't exist to answer people's questions. It only requires that we provide the records that we have. And so people need to understand, you just can't the world because we're not not required by law to create the world for you. We're only required to provide the records that exist, not create them. So I think that's the best I can say, Donald, on on that particular issue. I do have a couple of other things. One was in my manager's report, people are able to request early ballots. The ballots won't be printed, obviously. Five o'clock this evening, nomination petitions, and they weren't really petitions, but a different consent form to place your name and nominations were due at the town clerk's office. So I I don't have any information as to how many people have filed receipts throughout the community, including school boards and otherwise, but that that closed at five o'clock, that will be a part of the ballot. We have work to do to to work on the amended ballot. We have work to do to, to work on the amended ballot that we have, that will go to the printers and become part of the ballot. So the ballots are now being prepared. So if you are interested in voting absentee or early voting, as they call it, you may request ballots now. We would keep your name on file and mail them to you as soon as they are available with instructions on how to return. That, I do that as a request as a town clerk's office this evening. I also have a request from the Meals on Wheels program that came to me just today. In just certain discussions with Ilsa Swoboda at Meals on Wheels, with the senior, senior center being closed, Meals on Wheels sees a need perhaps for seniors who don't have access to computers to be able to register for the vaccine. Now, I know there are call-in numbers. I understand today that over 45,000 people requested appointments for vaccinations. I was told earlier that the, the system crashed something like a dozen times. So to help people with that, Meals on Wheels is offering a vaccine assistance program at their facility where they serve the meals. They will use their computers to help people register if people don't have access. People can also put the library if they understand how to work computers, but don't have one of their own attempt to register. I, I understand that it's a very difficult process right now because so many people are trying to sign up. But I, I would encourage people to be patient. I've, I've heard some real stories of how long people have waited online, waited on the phone to try to get an appointment. But I just encourage people to be patient. I'm happy that people, that as many people as, as appear to be willing to get vaccinated are out there and anxious to be vaccinated, because that's the only way we're going to end this, this pandemic is people need to get vaccinated. Those who refuse because of their fears or because of social media or online hopes is I think you place yourself at risk, but you also think it's the rest of your community at risk when you do that. So let me just give you the, the number to call Meals on Wheels folks. It's eight zero two four four two eight zero one two, extension one. And they are there throughout the day. I think it's something like eight to five in the evening. And they will be available to help those who don't have access to computers, attempt to register for the vaccine. And with that, Donald, I think that is really all I've got.
Okay, Jean had a question for you a couple of minutes ago. Jean, are you still in the queue here?
Yeah. First of all, Dan, yeah, he's still on the call. I just wanted to tell you that I read the Bike and Pedestrian Project update. And these projects are really coming up. I mean, 2022 is the furthest out. So that's really exciting. I, you know, you, you forget that 2022 is next year. So that was really great. And Stuart, do you have any kind of an update on where we are for the Morgan Spring Relocation Project?
That should be out to bid. It was held up because of some design changes that were made. If you recall, we were working with one of the water purchasers. They were going to participate, but they wanted to expand the project to make it a little easier for their trucks to maneuver. That has since shrunk back to the original design. So it required some design changes and some specification changes, but that should be out to bid within the next two weeks. I don't think we've really lost anything because we, we had hoped to bid it in the wintertime with an idea that construction wouldn't start until spring anyway. So we really haven't lost a lot of time. And, and given the continuing problem with COVID, construction may be delayed slightly anyway, but that is going out to bid very soon.
Okay, Stuart, thank you for that report. As well as the other information that you included in that, we, we appreciate you, your communicativeness. So the next item on our agenda is to talk about the upcoming agenda. I guess probably we should be reminded of the upcoming meetings, right? So
Yes.
Would you like to, would you like to remind us what's coming up, please?
Yes, next Monday night, February first, we will hold our first public hearing on the mayoral question that will be on the ballot this year. It is the same question that was on the ballot last year. It is Article three on the warning. We are required by law to hold two public meetings. The first will be on the, the first will be on the first, that's interesting, of February. The second must be held because this is by petition within 10 days of the first meeting. So we will meet again on February eighth, which is a normal select board meeting. But there will be a public, public hearing portion of that meeting dedicated to the second hearing on the mayoral question. So next Monday night, it'll be six o'clock, all mayoral question only. There'll be no other business that'll be conducted on the eighth. The final public hearing will be part of the regular select board meeting. And we will, we will get out the, the numbers for people to call in on those, Donald, as soon as we can. And we'll get a, an agenda out that, that indicates what those numbers are so that you can call in.
Sarah, and I just noticed that Jim, Jim's connection dropped, Nancy lightly for the purposes of minutes, so. Okay, so we, and here it comes back again. So we are okay, so we've got all Article three on February first. On February eighth, we will be looking at the minutes of January ninth. Don't forget about those, please, Stuart. And we will be looking at the second reading of the domestic violence policy, Bruce, is that right?
That would be correct. And I'm hoping for another first reading.
Okay.
Donald, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Bruce, will you be getting us a corrected version so that we continue, we contain the amendments that were made tonight?
Well, I don't think any amendments were made tonight, but, but.
Another wording discussion going on.
There is some wording discussion. I will have something probably.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other agenda items that we know about at this point, Stuart?
Thankfully, no.
Yes, the Energy Committee is coming on the eighth.
Oh, thank you, Jeanie. I think.
That's good.
Jeanie, are they, are they bringing their sort of year in review report? What's their?
They are. The, there will be a short slide presentation overviewing the recommendations that the, so basically completing their, their first charge. So they'll be bringing the recommendations for the priority action items for the town and for the Energy Committee.
Okay. And we will see what the times are like and whether or not we need further updates from the hospital, I guess, if, if we can. As we, as the time gets close, Sarah, let's talk about that ahead of, ahead of Tuesday agenda setting meeting, if possible.
Oh, and Donald, could I just jump in there since you mentioned that? I believe the Medical Center has been approved for a mass vaccination site at Southern Mount College Gymnasium.
Good.
You'll, you'll be hearing more about that.
Right. Yeah, when you were talking about dead shots, I, this is in the PSA department, but I, I know Governor Scott was talking about younger people helping, asking their parents and grandparents if they need help signing up for the vaccines. So that's something you can do for your community. We hope everybody will do that. And not just your parents and grandparents, but any, any people that you know that may be in the category of needing help with computers. So. All right. Other business, any other business, Bruce? Let's just go around the horn. Bruce, do you, anything you have tonight that you want to add to the meeting?
Not tonight, nothing.
Okay. Jean, Jeanie? Jim, anything from you tonight? Not hearing anything. Sarah, any, anything from you tonight?
Stay safe, stay warm, that's it.
Yeah, stay safe, right. Good words, good words. All right. Well, we do not need an executive session tonight, so I would look for a, a motion to come out of this meeting, please. Thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, people. Thank you for sticking with it tonight. Bennington, thank you very much. Do stay safe, as it says, and we'll, we'll be.